...to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This Monday, February 5th morning, we have fifteen haws in for the auditor, hoping to accomplish with the county attorney president. First off on the agenda, I have asked, or we have asked, the insurance company to stop in and let us know what their take is on the publishing of the wages and salaries of the people. I know a lot of people upset about that, as are we. And Michael Voweth is our insurance director. Michael, do you want to kind of give an update on where we're at? What the process is, please?
Gladly. Michael Voweth with Consolidated Union, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I apologize for the circumstances of meeting, but I do want to address a couple of key issues. I want to thank commissioners for being proactive in the way they've handled it. They reached out to me immediately, you had the chance to respond on your behalf, so kudos to them. They did offer to immediately step in and say, hey, we want to make sure we get care of our employees and provide a chance to provide, you know, something to offer credit monitoring service, and I have advised them not to do so at this time, okay? There's a clause in the policy that could jeopardize coverage if they attempt to adjust or amend the coverage of the policy by adjusting a claim on your behalf, and we don't want to jeopardize the coverage. We have submitted a claim to the insurance company. There are potentially four areas of coverage that coverage could apply: inter liability policy, public official there's emissions policy, public official bond, and a cyber liability policy. I can't tell you today which area of coverage will apply because I don't know how or if your information will be used, okay? But our hope is, our thought is, that will be coverage, and we think that that's going to be the case. A couple of things that I do want to address: there are things that you can do to help yourself. I don't envy the position that you're in, but there is a silver lining, and there are things that we can do to be proactive, and I hope that you guys will all be proactive in taking advantage of this because it can be a learning opportunity. Every one of you can go out and lock your personal credit score. There are three separate credit monitoring services: Equifax, Experian, and TransUnion. You can go to their three websites, you can lock your own personal information, and nobody could be able to apply for a loan, credit card, or information, including yourself. That's something that you can do to be proactive. The other thing that I would ask you to do is keep track of any expenses or costs associated with it. Now, I'm not telling you to go out and get an attorney because that's not the cost you're associated with this circumstance. If you have negative outcome, or if you have something bad that comes about, or if you have expenses related to the direct cause of your information being published, that's something that could be potentially reimbursed or compensated for in the future as a result of the claim. There is an adjuster that was assigned as of this morning. We found out about this on Thursday. Took me a minute to get some phone calls. I made three phone calls to the insurance company on Friday. There is an adjuster that has been assigned. I'm awaiting the conversation with him. So, we do anticipate there being coverage. I'm not going to commit to anything at this time. There are potentially four areas that coverage could apply depending on how and if the information is being used, but I have to wait until I talk to the adjuster to determine what the course of action is. The insurance company, on behalf of the county, will communicate back to commissioners to have a game plan in place to respond on your behalf, and we will communicate back through whether it's commissioners or HR or however, to make sure that you guys are best taken care of as best we can. Does anybody have any questions? At that time, at this time, that is the best, I mean, I can give you the claim number. I printed 25 copies of the information. I'll be honest, you guys would be wasting your time to call the weight under number and go to the switchboard to get you, and if everybody calls the adjuster and tries to drown the information, it's going to be counterproductive. I'm not going to say I won't give you the information if you're adamant about having it, but I'd ask for a little bit of patience because it's a very fresh and new circumstance. Yes, ma'am?
So, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So, basically, if the commissioners asked you, the insurance company, you, not you personally, but you, the insurance company, to have credit monitoring for all the employees because of the breach, then that would mess up one, basically mess up one of their other policies. So, that's something that they, and you're not suggesting they do and they don't do, but if there is a breach, you think the insurance policy may or may not cover it?
There are people that, we're going to have absolute experts who only deal with this information. I can't give you names, but I'll give you an example of a similar type of claim that I dealt with a year and a half ago. The demand was $880,000, okay? I had three different attorney firms from out in New York City dealing with it. One was for HR and the PR side of things. One was negotiating with the terrorists, people whose information was jeopardized, and they were negotiating with them to try to prevent additional future damages. The third one was forensic attorney accounting firm trying to figure out how and when the information was released. I mean, these people know the ins and outs. I mean, I know, you know, the attorney doesn't know every detail of every law in the state of Indiana. These people only work in this segment of this coverage. They might come back to us and say, hey, you know what? We can't use this, these people can't use this information anyways, and to make these people happy is what we're going to do. But they'll know the ins and outs and the finite details. My job is to know coverage and how to facilitate claims and the coverage as it applies to counties and public entities. I don't know those details specifically. What I'm telling you is if we try to adjust a specific aspect of the claim, it could jeopardize another area of coverage, and I don't know what portion of coverage is going to apply.
I have no doubt that your company can handle this type of, you know, identity theft claim. That's not my question. My question is, so if the commissioners actually had you guys take out credit protection for all of us, it could jeopardize it? But really, the main question is, so what if you took out another?
No, if they took out credit monitoring themselves on their own accord, it could jeopardize what we do. The insurance company may step in and say, hey, we need to offer this to them automatically, and I don't want them offering it to you to jeopardize what they're going to do for you.
So, that's on the adjusters to do this, is to see if the insurance company go offer their credit monitoring?
Correct. Absolutely. And like I said, they're professionals. They'll tell us whether or not, what services need to be provided to those affected individuals. And I don't want you to think that because you're just an employee, this isn't an issue because the county's policy is very robust. It is a first-party liability issue, but also third-party. Third-party is, and I don't, I know I should know your name because I've met, is it Casey?
It's Casey, yeah.
Casey. We've met before, I used to live here nonetheless. You're not named as an insured in the policy as a you, the county of Fulton, Casey, but you, third-party, could be, have liability as a result of damages from what the county has done. Make sense?
Absolutely.
And so, the county's policy is very robust in the fact that it can provide cover to first-party and/or third-party, and so in that regard, we don't want to take a chance of jeopardizing what we can do.
My concern is that the credit, what I heard you just say is that that credit monitoring option won't come into play until the identity theft has occurred.
I didn't say that. We're going to let the insurance company adjuster determine at what point or if and when that is offered. If and when they determine if that is offered, then the pin commissioners will have an option to do something if they choose to do so thereafter.
What kind of timeline does that look like, considering we're five days in and you've got businesses jeopardized?
I can't answer that. It should be, it should be probably within, I'm going to say, a week to 10 days.
So, I can lose all my money within a week to 10 days?
I highly doubt, I highly doubt that's going to happen.
Well, you highly doubt it. You're just an insurance guy that doesn't want to charge these guys any more money. You highly doubt, but what happens if, what happens if I lose my money?
Like I said, there are-
If I lose my money, are you going to pay for it? Is the county going to get it back for me?
There are things that you can do-
Exactly, not.
There are things that you can do to be proactive.
But I have to pay for that. You caused the problem, they caused, whoever, I don't care who it is. The county has literally caused a problem, and now you want me, as an employee, whether I'm part-time, full-time or not, to pay for it? And you, as insurance, because you don't want to hurt somebody's feelings, aren't willing to step up, say, you know what? It's already been five days, you guys, let me get to you now, because you don't know if it covers. So, now I could be two weeks, now I could be a month, and what happens then? All the money I had saved, my retirement, everything's gone? What if I live paycheck to paycheck?
There's a process-
And then literally, I go home, I get a paycheck, well, it's gone, it's gone. I got all my money I saved up, then I got to get it evicted. Are you going to pay for my apartment?
Oh, my God, sick.
There's a process that has to take place, and you have to have a chance to let that process play out.
But you're also talking two weeks, maybe a month.
I never said that. We're going to do it as fast-
Or did you not just say 10 days?
We're going to, we're going to do it as fast as we possibly can. I was made aware of the circumstance on Thursday, and I said before you on Monday to answer your questions. Thursday afternoon late.
But you can also go on TransUnion and do the lock, so nobody can get your access to your-
I got paid for that.
No, you do not. Free charge.
What's free charge?
To lock your own personal credit score. TransUnion, Equifax, and Experian.
Now, could the commissioner have done something before they talked, and you did it? The commissioners had no other, other way of doing anything?
I mean, they could have, but it would have potentially jeopardized the insurance company providing services. I'm not going to tell you that whatever services they provided would be better. I will tell you that the company we're dealing with is Liberty Mutual, Fortune 500 company, one of the largest insurance companies in the world, have some of the best experts you can possibly, money possibly can buy, and they're going to do their best to make sure that the customers take care of them.
You know, possibly the rest of our lives we're going to have that long.
What's that?
If we don't do something, we could end up having to have that hard credit lock.
Unfortunately, I have been victim of identity theft myself. It's unpleasant for about six months. After you go through the process, you deal with it with the federal government, and they basically give you a new number instead of your social security number, it's called FBI and PIN number. Once you get that new PIN number, it's like a new social security number, and you deal with that for the rest of your life. That's what you file your taxes on, and nobody ever looks back. I know that number probably easier and more readily handily than I do my social security number because I use it now more.
Now, come on. You and I both know, this is where I'm going to interrupt you. You can give me that number, but where's my history after that? That history doesn't carry along with you, that new number. You are now going into banks and you're explaining yourself to banks every day, making a loan for what has happened. And I understand this is a catch-22 situation, but you have to understand where they're coming from. They're coming from a standpoint that this was not by their choice, this was not by their own mistake, this was by a mistake from someone else. And that someone else was hired here to sit there and not only take advantage of protecting the constituents of the county, but the employees. Last four numbers, I don't care how you spin it, they're the last four numbers. When I call into a credit card company, what do they ask me for? When I go, go, wait, wait, let me have my chance. I go in and I ask for medical records, what are they going to ask me for? I go in to pay utility, what are they going to ask me for? You can look up my name on G.I.A.S., you can look up my address, you can look up my phone number. Half, 95% of the people in here have my phone number, so if I want to sit there and I want to go over to a credit card company and I want to try to make a change, I'm just giving them the last four. Is Rochester or Fall County full of people that want to be malicious? No, but the world is, and you're right, 100%. This is an incident that whether it happened here at the county, it can happen outside of the county anytime, any day. It's upon us outside of the county, and I understand that.
And Josh, I completely agree with what you're saying, and what I told you from the get-go, is we don't know if these people are going to use this to take out credit cards, file health insurance claims-
Or even if they're going to use it.
-or file a false tax return. I gave you my personal experience. My personal experience of somebody using my credit card or my social security number to file a false tax return. My deal was with the federal government, I got a new PIN number, and I never looked back. Yes, there are other conveniences.
Their top ones, yes.
The silver lining, I hope everybody in this room learns something. I hope everybody is a little bit more proactive with their own personal finances. Does it suck? Excuse my friend, yes. Are we all going to be a little bit more diligent? Did we all learn a little bit of something? Yes. Are these the cars that were dealt with? Yes. Do we all have to deal with it? Yes.
Why are you making it sound like it's our fault? I mean, you're doing it wrong like it's our, like, what the hell are you talking about?
We all hired in here for county employees, we trust the county with our information.
We're doing much of our-
Now look at it. Well, it sounds like if you're going to just call up and you got to do this, this, and this. No. Hold on a minute here. That ain't right. That ain't right.
And where does the buck stop as far as any reimbursement should something happen? I mean, most of our department, our employees have second jobs. Where does that stop? Is it personal liability with credit, or does the, will they be reimbursed for any business finances that are going to be compromised?
You have to keep track of all your information and all your expenses and provide that to us when the time comes.
So, basically, lose your money first, then insurance. Why don't you go through the hoops and then get somebody back?
Those insurance policies aren't set out to make somebody rich, they're made to put somebody back like they were made before something bad happened. It's a reimbursement, it's a, it's a put you back where you were before something bad happened. For that, I apologize. My job is to try to put you back. In the event something bad happens. I hope nobody's had anything bad that's happened so far. Knock on wood, hopefully that continues to be the case. But responsible thing for the commissioners to do, buy a good reputable insurance policy. They have done that. Is anyone, can anybody in the room raise their hand and say, I've never made a mistake? Okay. I mean, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be distasteful. We've all made mistakes. I don't know, I don't personally know who made the mistake at the county. I don't want to know.
We all know. We all know who made the mistake because when the folks were hired in, you had to fill out an application. When they were hired, they had to fill out all of the federal and state paperwork, just like everybody else does, and guess what's on there? Confidential information. That confidential information was then relayed into a software system for the county for bookkeeping. There's only so many people who have access to that information. It's confidential. If I came in right now and I said, please give me Mr. Lewis's I-9 form, you know what I'd be told? You know what I'd be told? No, you can't have it, it's confidential. The problem is, line number whatever, number four, number five, whatever, they had that social security number, was related to a software system for the county. Then a report was generated and literally handed to the newspaper and said, please report this. Please publish it. No one in this room needs to learn anything based on that because we had nothing to do with it. The problem is, that information was confidential. I don't, I'm assuming almost everybody in this room, because it's a, unfortunately, a commonplace thing, we've all received letters that have said, your information has been breached. We have taken it upon ourselves to get you credit monitoring, please call this number, please go to this website, sign your name up, you know, we're monitoring this, if you have issues, call us. I've had that from MSU, I have had that from Blue Cross Blue Shield, I have had that from Optin Specialty Pharmacy. These are huge names, Jeff, like Liberty Mutual. They took it upon themselves to contact me and say, your information was breached, we really apologize, the hackers got it, we have gotten covered. It wasn't a, if you have issues, you know, please take responsibility for your own stuff, do your own monitoring, and if you have issues, contact us.
And we're only two weeks later.
It was-
Generally, what I will tell you is that you find out about those things about six months after it happened. So, we're three and a half days in.
I understand.
Please be patient with us. Let us, and there will be an investigation by the insurance company to determine how and when and why, so that they can figure out where coverage needs to apply. I'm just asking for a little bit of patience. If we all work together, we'll get through the investigation faster, and we'll make sure it's done as fast as we can.
My only question?
Yes, ma'am.
Why didn't that stop at Rochester Sentinel? Why did it get published? Why didn't they question that?
I would defer to the attorney because I'm not a, I'm not a publication expert.
I don't know, I was, I was on vacation last week. I know that we received some emails regarding that fact. Is that correct, Ryan?
Yes.
So, whether they're negligent or intentional, the burden's now on us.
We have no idea at this point. And-
Does Rochester Sentinel go to be on a resumption for?
No, they only print what is given to them. They cannot edit or decide they didn't like that word and leave it out. So, whatever was sent to them-
They have to-
-they print.
They have to send a proof back before print, though, correct?
They send a proof back that says, this is okay. Once that's approved, they print it. That's the process.
Thank you.
Was that expenditure report approved in the last commissioners' meeting?
I'm sorry?
Was that expenditure report approved in the last commissioners' meeting? I'm sorry, I didn't see.
What expenditure?
By law, that, what is published with all the salaries and everything is actually the expenditure report for the previous year, and by law, the commissioners are supposed to approve that and then actually give that authorization of, go ahead and publish it, we approve of all these expenditures for the year.
I'll have to look back and see what was on the document with that. I mean, and we are doing, there's a lot of, a lot of things at play behind the scenes here. I mean, we have your guys back. We're doing everything we can legally, so I mean, don't think we're out here, you know, the part of the-
You're no part of it too.
Yes. Yeah, and we're, we're there to expose you all, we're all in the same boat, so, you know, and like I said, we have to defer to our legal team and the insurance on what they can, you know, what they recommend us to do. There's only, you know, I mean, I, I'm, believe, we're as frustrated as you are.
How soon can we get transcripts of last meetings, me if you had clinical data or not?
On the website.
I don't know, they haven't made it there yet. I will-
What do you say, Kim?
I want copies of that because if, literally, if you guys agreed to it, she published it, are you guys, I mean, you three, I mean, you got to watch what goes out of the thing, that's a salary, and obviously-
The salaries and wages are covered.
Well, salaries and wages are on there, so what are, so what are our social security numbers?
I don't know what's on there, Troy.
Then you, if you don't know what's on it, how, I mean-
I'll have to look back at it.
Are you asking about the ad, the expenditure for that ad? That ad hasn't, that ad was put in there, Sentinel has not, has not invoiced that yet?
No.
No, no.
They don't ask what report-
And report?
What she, what she-
You don't activate, it's not your responsibility.
I knew the answer. I was just wondering if the report was given to you like it's supposed to by law, or you to approve before it was given to the Sentinel. Like I said, I knew the answer, so maybe you shocked me. It's like, yes, we saw it. She has to publish that to the gateway.
Is there any other question? Is there any other question you guys have for us? Or you want to share something?
I have a question for Holly. You had mentioned, you know, the legal ads have to go, and they can't alter them when they receive them, they being the Sentinel. When you look through previous years, there's some type of, I know I'm not using the right word, affirmation statement where it is confirmed that it is true in fact. This year's paper didn't have that. Does that hold any weight of the fact that it wasn't truly a legal ad then?
I don't know, I can't answer that without looking at all of it. Are you saying it's the newspaper who says it's true and accurate, or it's on the-
No, normally, in past publications, there will be from a specific department, a statement with their name and their position, saying, I so-and-so, political so-and-so, affirm that this is true and factual, blah, 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 and that wasn't on there this year.
I would have to look at that and see exactly what the statute talks about, them doing that, so.
Is the Sentinel taking that out of the paper, or is it left in forever and ever?
Well, I, I've spoken with the prosecutor. I think, I think somebody was reaching out to the Sentinel, the corporate office, and I think they're trying to redact that section of that page, so I don't know where that's at. Like I said, this is Monday morning, so I don't know how I had a chance to talk to anybody yet. I'm hoping that that would be something that any publication would have some compassion for and would put us on that, so it's my understanding that they're working on doing that stuff.
Brian, I did talk to Mike. He indicated that he did reach out to the Sentinel, but I haven't spoken to him yet this morning to know kind of the details of that, but I know that at least from Mike's perspective, he did reach out.
Yeah. So, I mean, like, so there are a lot of things going on in the background that's the world working on, so, I mean, I just, you know, please understand, we have the backwards and everything we possibly can to make this, to fix the situation that-
There is no fix.
Well, there, we're doing what we can do. I mean, it's, we're doing the best we can.
Kind of going off the curve, but from here to the future, whatever, are you going to make sure that this doesn't ever happen again?
There are guarantees in life.
There should be somebody that's-
No, how are you going to keep this employee from doing shit like this again?
That's what we can't.
It's an elected official, and that's where you run into problems, that you have very little oversight on elected officials.
That's not true. You call attorney general, get the things started.
There's probably some things like that going on, Troy.
There are a lot of things in motion, Mike. That's right. I don't want to tell you guys, I mean, there's a lot of things in motion, so I, we just can't, we can't say some stuff because legality reasons, there's a lot of things in motion, and we don't take it lightly. We don't. So, I don't want to say, I mean, we're, I mean, we're, like I said, I'm sorry, yeah, we're, we're just upset you guys, and we're, we're working on-
The other thing I do want to share with you guys, it's a terrible situation. I think, you have a question about credit monitoring into the future? I think legally, they're responsible for 12 months, so, I mean, you don't know, today, you put your credit card into a gas reader that has a scanner on it that reads your credit card. I mean, that's something that, quite frankly, I mean, the attorney and I were talking about this, we don't know if your information gets compromised, we don't know if they got the information from this leak, or if it was from something else. So, really, when you talk about how you're going to protect us into the future, some of that onus, I mean, that's why I keep talking about a silver lining, we're going to do everything we can, but, I mean, you guys got to be responsible for your own stuff too, and, and, I mean, going forward, it can happen in 13 months, and the credit monitoring does you no good, it happens in 13 months. Do you follow me?
No, I understand, and I think, I think for the majority of people in here, it's not so much the fact, what it is, it's the fact of why.
And it's, and it's a cumulative basis, it was 200 records at one time.
And the one benefit, and you're exactly right, that we do have, is most companies would have been incorporated, and now we sort of know about it, if we had seen it, we would have known about what was going to be done for some fire. So, as far as all of you addressing it.
But if your public entity is supposed to publicly post in the newspaper-
And if this was done intentionally, not on accident, like if it was a gas-
And that's, and that's what I tell you, I don't know if it's which one of those four areas of coverage, because if it was intentional, I could tell you which area of coverage it's going to be under.
Well, I think that's the biggest problem, and we all know that our security, you know, our information is at risk, possibly from somebody reading the numbers off your card when you walk in store. In this particular case, we know what the problem was. One individual took confidential information off of federal and state documents out of an HR department, ran a report, and faxed it to a newspaper and asked them to publish it. That is something everybody in this room had zero control over. That's the cross of the problems.
And for that, I apologize, even though I have nothing to do with it, I can't help you.
You didn't work.
My goal was to try to help you guys going forward. So I ask for patience. I ask for any help that if you have, like I said, please, if, if there's any silver lining, please be proactive. You could all help yourself. If you block your three credit scores, you keep track of your expenses. And if and when the adjuster gets in touch with you or you have information, please report it to your, your, your direct department head. The direct department head will report it to HR, who will report it to the commissioners and or myself. And, and if we all cooperate, it will go much smoother.
Going forward, is there any way of keeping that office out of HR issues? Can you guys pass an ordinance as commissioners to, you deal with HR issues? So this would never happen again? Is that something that could be done through an ordinance?
Do you have to agree to a question? I, I'm, I gotta be careful. Can I get an answer?
I, I can't answer that right now without researching it. I'm, I'm sorry, but.
That's kind of what I meant, but I also, anyway, I know you can get, you can get life off on your own, but, uh, I don't know, maybe like a big deal like this could get even more of a discount where like we sign up for all benefits. That's something else we're gonna sign up for in the future. Just throwing it out there for.
Anybody else? I'm trying to rush it. I just, like I said, there are a lot of things going on in the background that we're working on, so.
Are we gonna be kept up to speed? Appreciate it. So basically, the only thing we can do right now?
That's all I can tell you right now. I know what information is, how it's used, where it's used. I, I would love to stand here and say, hey, there's gonna be offer, it's gonna be that. But if I extend myself, then it potentially, you know, makes my insurance company available.
I just wanna make sure I'm doing the right things. You can, you do your job and I can keep my information safe.
I understand that and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So why isn't that elected official here at this meeting?
She's an elected official. You guys hold, you guys hold accountability to an elected official both, uh, but.
Why ain't, why ain't they here at this meeting to answer?
Can't force her.
Can't force her now.
I'm sorry. I mean, I. There's not, there's not a thing I can do, you know, to look at this. I mean, I mean, unless there's criminality goes to attorneys and everything else, prosecutor. It's frustrating.
Does anyone need the information to lock their credit?
I'd like it.
Cause I have it. I can send it.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
And check with your department heads. I'm not sure how to get ahold of everybody easily unless we get Christina, Austin and, send out emails to everybody, but we'll probably send department heads out so that you guys, your department heads are, you know, I mean, I'm hoping, I mean, this is money, but I'm hoping maybe today or tomorrow, we can get some type of update from the insurance company or his adjuster or board's head. And as soon as we get stuff, we, we will update everybody.
Did you say you have some information on how to do that? Would you send that out to either HR or department heads?
I'll just send it to her and she.
She can relay it out?
Send it out.
That way I might get it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Anything else on, on this right now? We're here to answer questions. Okay. We can move on if everybody wants to stay for everything or.
I know. I saw a couple of names we had submitted for our amendments from January meeting.
That was, is that the first meeting? Resolution for the Fulton County Commissioners to adopt amendments to the Fulton County's own cellular control rules. And so, resolution number 02012224. Is anybody here concerned on that, or reading? I'm hearing that, or, you know, wish this approve. Second, Alison, make the motion.
Second.
Then I had a fee waiver for the Habitat for $175 application fee for variance and $50 waiting to bid. I can't think of the address off my head. Brian has the paper, but they had demoed a house and they wanna rebuild it for, they had to apply for variance.
1016, 1016.
1016, 1016.
Questions on that? Motion to, uh, approve the fee waiver.
And I talked with Brian and I sent the interlocal agreement over to the city. Um, I have not been able to get it for Steve Driver's signature. However, I considered it just Brian's signature. Um, so obviously it wasn't paid by January 1st, but I'll see if they'll just take your signature or not. I know. Okay. Um, but if not, I need to know. Maybe I can use another one. I got it.
All three in one?
Yes.
Cause on the bottom, it actually has hers and then Brian. And Brian signed it for me while that went in, so we're sure they would get it. So if you have to get administrative, it's without what's issues.
The L3?
Yeah, I'll see if they don't, if they don't, yeah, if they don't wanna pay, I'll have to reiterate it.
I don't think you can close it.
Yeah, that one's open. Yes, I can.
The end of the year report, um, we did 830 permits last year and brought in $86,502. 2022, we brought in 81,714, so that's 2022. Keeping busy. That's it.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Another thank you.
Thank you. And I will, uh, I have her sign it and we'll look. I guess it don't matter. This is for my records.
That's a Holly question.
This is for my records for a fee waiver. It's the fees, but I have to have that on there. Just for mine.
Um, I, since she is not here today, you can put in a deputy, you can add in Fulton County Deputy Auditor and Deputy Son.
Go for it.
So are you considered a deputy?
Sure.
Not all of us.
It's actually the first deputy.
And she's not here.
She's, she's. Yeah.
All right. So I'm all done.
Thank you.
I'm working updates.
Cool.
Sparkler, glad carry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Those are rough. One left. Uh, I got the carpets cleaned here in the annex over the weekend. Hope everybody can smell the difference. So, um, the core on the boiler that we talked about last year, I'm getting replaced. And I encumbered the money across to this year. Uh, I would like to get that started and have you guys sign this so that I could pay them potential part of the money to get things ordered. Cause that don't be a problem. Um, my next thing is, hang on a minute.
Oh, I mean, do they, do they have any stated in here? Uh, okay. Okay. So I'm thinking, can we have, uh, proposals in excess of 30,000?
I'm talking about, well, convergence and you haven't got the money appropriated yet.
Well, he'll bring it back next meeting.
Oh, well, okay.
We're just signing here, accepting this proposal and, uh, then we'll 50%. They'll give us an invoice for 50% of this.
It's good for.
We can sign this.
Yeah.
This is for, uh, the boiler and the courthouse.
Yes.
And it's just the work on the one.
It's just the one that we're replacing on.
For $105,488.
And that also includes the, I had two years to get stop switches installed on both boilers at this building and that building. It is a new code that they wrote and that is in part of that also. It's like $1,500 to put the stop switches in. So that's in part of that work. Because it's by law, we gotta get it done now.
Okay, that's the 1388 50 meter.
Yes.
Which is not, okay. All right. Okay. I hear you. Motion then to enter into this contract for mechanical services for the replacement of the one holder for $105,488. And the contract, uh, core services for the $1,358 for the emergency stop doors at the annex. These are those who just at the annex.
Yeah, just the stop switches are at the annex and then there'll be stop switches installed when the new boiler goes in over there at the same time. So move.
Second. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Nope.
Sorry. Now, the next thing I was gonna go to is, uh, Judge Heller asked me, um, if he could get a half door and stubble installed in his office in the Superior Court office. Um, all the other offices have like a, like a detour of stopping someone from going all the way around their desk and into the office and walking through. He's the only one that doesn't have one and he's asked if I could get one for him. I got an estimate from Car Construction and, uh, it's $2,800. And I wanted to know if I could have the approval. It is in my budget if I could get that done. Sounds like some need to be done. Security.
Anything pushing for that for Judge Heller?
And I also brought that up in the safety and security meeting that me and Rick and Gail looked at. About a little bit about that. And moving on with that same thing over at the probation office. Um, when you walk in, it's an open right there to all the girls and it's kind of a, uh, unsafe area, I guess you could say. Um, they've asked if I could get something to deter them, like a glass or something, uh, where you can still speak through it and they can send the files through, but it would block that area. Um, I got Rochester Glass gave me an estimate on that and it's $4,008. Um, and I'm asking for your approval on the budget that I have at the probation office. I have the money to do that and I'm asking if I can do that also. Andy's okay with it? And I talked to Andy and he was not on board at first, but he did come around when he realized that a lot of the stuff that the girls are talking about that involves other people, the other people out and awaiting are concurring. So they were kind of on board after that. Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, the next thing I got, um, Judge Lee got with me. Um, the seats, um, in the jury, where the jury sits in the courtroom are coming apart. All the foam is showing the red is, the material has ripped off. It looks kind of unprofessional. He would like to get those seats reupholstered. I got two, um, companies to come in and give me estimates on that and they're both within $15 of each other. I would like to go with Tempe Furniture. They will come, take it apart, take them up there, reupholster, bring it back and put them in. And they'll do it in the, the time that we ask them to do it. Um, while I'd like Judge Lee was on vacation or whatever. So I'm asking for that. Um, the price on that is $4,665. You paying for that? Are you budgeting? Yes, I am. Motion to approve?
Second. Thanks, Kurt.
What's that? What was that last one? Uh, $4,665. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
Thanks, Kurt.
John, I would.
Good morning, but it's a little late for that. First thing I got for you, I got some permits. Uh, first one I have is from Paul Slish, permit request 24-2. Um, this will be the third time, uh, this is a, Paul's reviewed this. Uh, he's wanting to cross 700 South at, uh, 476 West. And this is, uh, for a 60-foot road cut to install 15-inch tile at that address. I called you last week cause Paul was ready to go across there last week and we went ahead. Got him to do this. Uh, I think he was ready.
Motion to approve this 24-2. So move.
Second.
And then the second one I got is from Joe Knotts. Uh, it's a driveway permit. Um, he's wanting to install the driveway at 22721, uh, old US 31 North. And this is to fill in on the old, uh, driveway approximately 1,000 feet north of Olson Road. Rick and I went out there, we talked to him, kind of came up with a game plan, uh, to work that out.
So you guys are got it through with that?
Yes, I'm good. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
And the last one I got here is, uh, 24 dash four. That hits from the Shanks Brothers. And they're wanting to, uh, bore an eight-inch tile and this is gonna be approximately eight foot deep under, uh, 150 South. Uh, and it's about 540 feet west of, by, uh, County Route 500 East. I don't have any problems with that. As I talked to the contractor, uh, last week.
Anything to motion to approve, uh, 24-4? So move.
Second.
Um, just give you a rundown of what guys have been doing, uh, for some brush cutter. What little winter we've had, what we've had. Still cutting with our AMC, tossing holes and falling stone. It's been pretty nice, mild winter, so. So, uh, we need crossings. Uh, did get the projects, the list of the projects that you have, uh, that has been submitted for consideration and, uh, we should find out sometime in March if those get accepted. Uh, 031, the Federal A project, just submitted that, uh, for pavement, repavement of 31 North. Uh, had to, oh, uh, I don't know, the presentation for that last week. It seemed to go pretty well. They seem to be a little more receptive this year than they had been in the past. So hopefully that, that works good. Didn't seem to, in the past, it was a little more skeptical of it. It seemed to be more receptive.
Do you think that you might help that out in here?
I hope so. Uh, this year, instead of just sitting there talking about it, for, for to take facts and figures, it did a video of it traveling from the north to the south and showing why it was dangerous and the transfers cracking, the bumps and the school and businesses and trying to explain to them why there was a need. So they got a video of it. Hopefully that, they seemed to like that.
Good. Good.
Hopefully that, hopefully that helped. Hopefully that, hopefully that helped. Um, we did have the bid opening for, uh, old thirty-one south, uh, there a couple weeks ago, um, and that came in, uh, Fenton Browns won that, they got the winning bid of, uh, four million, sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars, uh, which makes our local match, uh, end up, it was over our, uh, original engineering estimate, but we'd updated our estimate and then the end up met that and still gave us the eighty twenty. Our match is eight hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, uh, and there should be a claim for that, uh, today in your document.
Can I help you some out?
Our match is eight hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventeen cents.
Okay.
Um, and I sent you a copy of the LPA end up contract. I need the board's approval for me to electronically sign that for you and get that into end up.
This is a blow up pre-agreement, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I sent you a copy of it.
Did Holly look at it by any chance?
I got your stuff this, uh, so yes, it's what I did.
So, so. Do you go with that? I'm going with that.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Go ahead and sign it.
We've got several, uh, pipes that need to be changed along and after the, the project starts and then there's a pre-con meeting that you know about before we start that project. That's all that has to be done. Uh, and then, um, on the fifth, which is this afternoon, we're supposed to have a pre-con meeting or a kickoff meeting with Endo for Bridge Thirty-Three. Um, and, um, still waiting for USI to complete the task order for the ADA Title VI Transition Plan. Uh, USI's supposed to be getting with us, Christine and I on, uh, the training for that, for the ADA Title VI.
We're supposed to have that done, what, by April, is that right? Is that right?
Yeah, about the first debate, right, Christine? Sounds about right, Ben. So we'll be having training scheduled here soon, so. Um, I did want to talk to you today about spring bids for asphalt chip seal, calcium chloride. Last year we did March third, uh, we usually do that on Friday. Possible dates would be March first, eighth, fifteenth. And, um, sound good to you? Am I to pick one?
Yes.
All right, first one good.
Yeah, the first, the first one's good.
March first?
Ten thirty, so.
Yeah, that's what we usually do. If that works for you. And then, uh, last thing I wanted to ask you, um, I was talking to Kerry about it. We've got a truck out there, that old Ford flatbed we got from Larry from EMA. We don't use it. It's a five fifty. We got it from Wintimack, uh, flatbed, yeah. We'd like to take it to Olson's and get rid of it and Kerry's having trouble with that Chevy that we gave him. Transmission's gone out of it. I think he'd like to take it over to Olson's and get rid of it too. We'd have your blessings.
And when you got from Wintimack, was that an army deal?
Well, it was an army deal, but it, it's a regular.
So you got the title without trying to get it?
We don't have the title for it. We never was able to obtain it. They don't have the title, so we have to sell without the title. It's, that's what I was wondering. We have the title for Kerry's truck.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have to sell that one without the title. They could never provide us with one and we never had it, but, um, we'd just like to get rid of it.
We're going to swap out the new tires that are on the truck though and put them on one of his trucks so we get to use out the tires.
When it's on your pickup?
Yeah, because it's got new tires. I said I didn't want to sell those new tires on it, that's.
Yeah.
So I have to, I have to put it on one.
The tires are on?
Yeah, on our pickups.
Other than that?
Oh, I have one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Powell.
I'll make this short and sweet, guys. My purpose is just to let everybody know that we finally, after November of twenty twenty-one, we finally got our brand new Ford S S four, it's two thousand, twenty-three, five hundred and twelve miles on it and it's, runs like a champ, everything's great. So just wanted to let you know that the county's money has been satisfied. Uh, I was worried about that. There was fourteen thousand of donations and I can't say, I want to thank everybody who's made a donation to the DAV ban that made it possible for our veterans to go to these VA or VA authorized medical facilities. So thank, uh, thank the public, thank everybody that donated and then all the, all the donations, large or small, we really appreciate it. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rick.
Gail.
The only thing that I have today is, um, we will be hiring somebody next week in reference to being off the EMA office. Um, it'll be a female and she'll be pulling out her paperwork this week for a part-time offer. So, um, in the meantime, part-timers and myself have been pulling out, out there. And that's all of that. And, um, I did maintenance that, um, last week, um, Dave Summers is on the EMA and one more, um, so that incident has been filed under emergency. Moving on, the nine one one numbers and reports were sent down to the state auditor. Um, the auditor's office is supposed to file that as well, but, um, I did those and those have been sent and approved and, um, kind of house like they're supposed to be. Um, for EMS, uh, we thought we were going to get, um, that contract back into your residence lab, uh, last week, but you should have it this week, hopefully. Um, Lutheran was reviewing, um, changes and so forth and then the two documents that you have before you, the one is, um, they do need your signature, uh, Brian being the president, um, holding, uh, the services that they currently are doing till March first. This is the, um, it's just a one pager.
Okay.
Yeah, so we need you to sign that. And then the other one with the loss document, we need you guys to re-sign that and noticing that it did say full county give us, it does need to say full county commissioners. If you can, uh, initial that and sign that as well. Uh, but that's Barry's continuous document, uh, that has been approved quite some time ago.
I thought we approved the Lutheran too, but it's safe, maybe we'll have to do it again. Correct.
Uh, sure, you did do that at the beginning, uh, or I believe it was in December.
I didn't want to, we wanted to be safe, I, I'm just positive we did, but.
Yeah. He wanted to read it, but, uh.
Just to meet you all.
You're good, you're good.
You're good.
They're good. And if you could keep the originals in your office, we need to keep a binder and then I will copy and send those out.
And then the Lutheran?
Yeah, we have the Lutheran, uh, fault network, it's, um, they're extending the contract on February fourteenth, twenty-four to March first, twenty-four, uh, so we can get all our contract figured out, so. We're still going to be here, yeah, we're not pulling out until we get this contract done, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion on that, questions? All fair. Motion carries through.
And also going to auction, um, I reached out to the other EMs in the district and so forth, um, in reference to the kitchen, we're trying to get that bay cleaned up, um, out there at EMA. Uh, Stark County is interested in that. If they do not want to take it, I'd like to send that to Olson Auction as well, so. And then maybe a military truck or two. Um, the stuff's just sitting there and we're just, uh, wasting our resources and money and keeping that stuff up. So, um, yeah, some of that stuff will be out the door.
Yeah.
And then we'll be, you know, I don't know, um, just like the last ones, some of them have titles, some of them do not.
Yeah.
So, and that's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
Okay, Gail, thank you.
Thanks, Gail.
Thank you. Okay, Jerry, quarter.
Good morning. Mine will not be real lengthy today either. I just got a few data and statistics from last year and then this year too. Uh, last year's not complete yet because we still are waiting on a couple autopsy results. Um, I want you to know in Fulton County, we had two hundred and two people pass away total in the county and that doesn't mean they're all Fulton County citizens because they come here for different things and things can happen like that, but, uh, there was ninety-six females and a hundred and six males. Um, of those deaths in the county, uh, Fulton County Coroner's Office investigated seventy-eight deaths. So that's about thirty-eight percent of all the deaths that occur in Fulton County. Of those, we have fifty-one natural, nine accidental, four suicide and one in a termin. Um, let me see, we had a total of eleven autopsies in twenty twenty-three and in twenty twenty-four, it was quite busy in January, we had eight families that we served and we actually had, uh, three calls within twenty-four hours. Two of those calls were within fifteen minutes and there was, uh, three of the coroners or two of the deputies and me all working on those calls at the same time, but we made it pretty smooth and seamless and of course, we always get great help from our Lutheran EMS and our law enforcement departments that help us. So it kind of keeps things smooth and running along. Um, Friday I'll be going to the coroner's training board meeting, um, that'll be upcoming. We're making our final plans for our event this summer for education in Indianapolis. Um, and I guess that's about it. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay.
Okay, Deb.
I'm, I was going to go attend to an ARPA meeting afterwards and stuff. I don't know if I need to bring it up here too.
No, no.
Okay.
Rachel, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, Travis? Sure. I'll be soon.
Um, this morning we had eighty-six inmates, of those fifteen are federal, nineteen of them Walbash County, fourteen D O C inmates. Um, I just outlined those because those are all we're charging for and we're making money on, so. Um, we did applicant testing for deputy's position on Saturday. We sent out six letters, six people actually showed up of those. We got three pretty good ones that, uh, continue on throughout that. Um, we're working on getting A Ds in all patrol vehicles. We've got, a lot of them are equipped now, we just need to get a few more, so we're working on some, uh, monies with that, trying to get that finished up to where all the patrol cars will have, uh, A Ds in them. Um, they opened up the bid process for, uh, Chevy Totos for three days. We were able to, we were able to order two of them, they're going to replace the K nine vehicles. We don't have a build date yet for them, so I don't know if it'll be spring or summer later, but they assured us that we're going to get them, so. Um, we have, or we're in the process of hiring for the, uh, special deputy SRO, um, position. The school was able to, um, figure out the, the funding sources on that, so that'll start towards the end of the month. Um, he'll have a couple months then with Mitch Scott, who's the current SRO in there to, to train up with that. We'll have to send him to SRO in school then over the summer, but then he'll be ready to rock and roll come August. Um, that's all I've got. If you guys have any questions.
What was the, what was, uh, Miami County inmates, how many?
Nineteen from Walbash County. Yeah, fifteen federal, nineteen Walbash County and fourteen D O C.
Fifteen federal?
Fifteen federal, yeah.
Talked about, I missed that also.
I busted it, so I apologize.
The car got wrecked, will the Tahoe replace that or how do you?
No, I mean, it's, no, the two K nine vehicles are the next up. The car that got wrecked was actually one of our older cars that was a pool vehicle in the county because James Gilam's the one that was driving that. He gets gear back in December, so it was in getting fixed and he was in the sedative, so, um, it did kind of change the things because we were hoping to have that vehicle as a pool vehicle, so, um, we'll make it work, so.
Okay.
Excellent.
Good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kind of a rundown of what's been going on in IT the last couple of weeks. We were able to finish the new servers, uh, with the X R L that we purchased earlier, uh, towards the fourth quarter of last year, we were able to put in place. Fire up, get that running. We moved about fifty-seven virtual servers over to that new unit, so I have a couple of virtual servers running on the old. Um, we are going to migrate those with the new operating system over to the new and we'll be able to snuff on everything and we'll decommission the old units. The old units, we have talked in the past that I mentioned to you the fact that I hate to have those, it's just a waste, there's a lot of money there. I've talked with Michael, Michael's mentioned to me that he's willing to sit there and kind of go over what our plans are with it to make sure that we're compliant with the insurance company from a cybersecurity standpoint, should we continue to utilize those, those pieces of equipment. That's where we're at with that. Um, security office, I know, Brian, you've asked about that and you know, and Travis, security office, we have the monitors, Kerry was able to put the mounts up and get that ready to go. We've got the server now that we've taken the old server, um, a lot of the, the parts of that, had to decommission that. We're able to remove some of those over. We're going to have a viewer server for the courthouse security that will provide the feed to all the monitors in their office, uh, so they don't have to worry about messing with that on any of the plates and so it continues to speed. Um, the other thing that we're working on is the website. Dave sat in with us on the website, we're getting it ready, ready to ramp that up. Um, they're going to start on the next request immediately, um, and then have a kickoff meeting with some of the key people for the actual website, so. We've also sent in the information to register for a dot gov domain. Uh, that opened up last week, so we're looking on that. We're going to look at moving away from our CO dot Fulton dot I N dot U S domain to a Fulton I N dot gov domain, um, so that will make things a little bit more simplistic when people are giving their mail addresses out because right now it's pretty difficult to sit there and rattle my information off. Um, the other thing that I wanted to entertain and just kind of put in your ear, projects like this, I know they're not on a monthly basis, but I remember when Devin started out, he was an intern on a part-time status, I believe. Wanted to see if you guys had any interest from a part-time, talking to some of the schools and looking at getting possibly an intern with very low hours to come in and, and kind of help us in certain situations. Just throwing it out there, it's not something that I'm completely asking for, but just putting a bug in your ear to see what, what the thoughts would be. Um, other than that, that's about all I've got right now.
You're available on the fourteenth, right?
Yes.
At three thirty?
Yes, yep. And then, and then the other thing I want to let you know too is, um, Crossroad GIS, Gail and I have been working with the individual, Neil Sexton, he's got started on that, um, so they're working on building up a map for Spill.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I just have, um, we have the grant from the state, from the Secretary of State's office and we're getting some new signage for the following places. Um, several of our signs have blown away in the wind over the years, so we just needed to update some of that and make it, um, show, have this sign going showing that we're all ADA accessible. Um, so we got that. And then, uh, just wanted to update you on Laura working remote, has worked great, it's been a huge help to us. And then, uh, we have Stacy McGriff that started last week in Nancy's position. Nancy moved to the prosecutor's office and, so we have that position open for her, allowed to, and we got that filled. Thanks, Casey. We stole Stacy from her.
Yeah.
But we really do appreciate her, so, and she's been there a week and doing great. That's about it.
Thank you.
Chris, you have anything?
Okay, so.
Okay, so, uh, I, I emailed it out a little while ago, but we haven't had an EXO contract for fifteen years, which is my vendor. Uh, I did bring a copy and, and gave it to you even though I already emailed it. Uh, that contract actually satisfies the, uh, D L G F's requirements, which they had requested in January that all the assessors upload their contract, which is how I realized we didn't have a contract. So, uh, my vendor, uh, got one together, and I, I brought it forward to you to see if you could sign it. Uh, pending your signature, I do have our bill for twenty-four thousand ninety-five dollars is in my budget to cover that. Uh, we have, uh, six people that use that, and, and the contract basically is just covering what is covered for the support and maintenance, and honestly, there's nothing we wouldn't or don't do for us. So, uh, it's, you know, just a formality at this point, so I'm hoping you sign that.
Okay. Follow your video.
Fine.
Yeah, and this is, uh, when's the effective date on that? The first of the year?
It's the first of the year.
Okay. I'm gonna be motioning to enter the contract, uh, for the support and maintenance agreement between Fulton County and EXO, given the assessment. Second, any questions? All clear? Motion carries three.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, I just wanna let you know which, if you wanna work on, like, the other two, the state sent me my compliance letter, so all of the twenty-twenty-three sales that happened in our county went well. Uh, all my information, I'll add to them, so, uh, the next thing I'll do is gracious study for it. Uh, I would like to ask your blessing that I could go ahead and start the process for me to set up my mobile assessing office. That'll happen during Form 11 time. Uh, it seemed to work out with the last time I did it, so I'd like to be able to have four, I don't have those dates, for you, to set up four after-hours, uh, assessing times that are in various locations in our community where people can come and see me between five and eight. If you're okay with that, I'd like to do that again.
Yeah, I heard a good thing about that. I think people appreciate that, so. Okay, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that's all I have, so.
Oh, I need a nap.
Chad, Kelly.
Um, I just have one thing. Um, our preventative maintenance program, TP Mechanical, hasn't really worked out the way that we were hoping. Um, I, in our contract, it says either us or TP Mechanical can void the, the contract with thirty-day written notice. Um, I got a new contract bid for, from Core Mechanical, and was kind of hoping to get your blessing to switch from TP to Core.
You're gonna send them a letter?
Yeah.
That'll do it, you know?
Yeah, you have done that.
I haven't done it yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, if you need it to work out, uh.
And, and that's, there, there is a price difference, but, I mean, I have it in my budget, and I, or I think the service will be way better at Core than what it.
Does it specifically state that you can cancel it for any reason?
Well, it says. It says either the customer or TP Mechanical can at any time cancel this agreement with a thirty-day written notice.
Okay.
You're good with it?
Yeah.
I'd like to do that, so.
What you need to do? You have it?
Yeah, and then you, after you do that, then you bring the contract to us, or the other contract?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Did you bid that to anybody else, or?
So originally, I did, I did three companies, which was TP, Core, and then O J S. They were out of, uh, Plymouth, but the second time I did not.
I think we need to bid it.
Okay. What do we think?
How many?
Well, you can shake your head hard enough.
I need to say, yeah, you can't just say Houston and pull that one back, you know? Maybe we need to rebid it.
Okay.
Since it's a new contract.
Okay. How, it's more bits?
Thank you.
Thank you. There's good. All right, listen, we, we, we. Okay. Yeah, we're quarter.
Yeah. Keep it down happy. For the fourth quarter of last year, we did, uh, we did thirty-five-hundred-and-eighty-eight senior trips, twenty-seven-hundred-and-forty-three public trips, for a total of sixty-three-hundred-and-thirty-one. County trips were eighteen-and-forty-five, total miles were forty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-four. Hours were three-thousand-ninety-four-point-one-five gallons of fuel, uh, two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-six-point-eight. We had income of forty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and fifty-four cents, expenses of a hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, and so probably going in for another forty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars for the fourth quarter claims, which I hope I'll have wrapped up this week. And then I brought a little spreadsheet for you guys, so you can see how we track our mileage expenses and everything. I don't know if you've ever seen this or not before, but I brought it.
You okay?
And that's really all I have.
Okay. All right. Okay, Michael, what?
Keep doing what's planned. I'll make this short. Um, on February sixteenth at nine o'clock at the Learning Center, uh, Casey and I are hosting a, uh, tax abatement seminar.
Nine o'clock on the sixteenth?
Nine o'clock on the sixteenth, at the Learning Center. Um, a few days before or after, because it's not set yet, um, my regional group is hosting a similar seminar on residential tax dis- uh, TIF districts. As soon as I know where it's located, which will probably be.
And that'd be TIF districts?
Yeah.
The sixteen would be TIF?
What we're hosting is a TIF district discussion.
Okay.
Explanation. What the regional group is holding is a residential TIF district, which is completely different.
Okay, the, the sixteenth, did you say tax abatement or TIF district?
TIF.
TIF, okay.
I hope I said TIF.
You said it makes it.
Okay.
Because I don't know so much about myself.
No, you're good, you're good.
Um, okay, so we've got that out of the way. The housing study's proceeding, except I need, uh, you were holding a resolution on the, uh, Hoover Homes for third reading. I'll definitely help us get that going. We've identified a number of, of new sites as well, um, in various locations around the town. Uh, as soon as we get, we're planning on getting a, a full study group to back together, a full committee. Uh, we just haven't set the dates on, on, into that yet, and as soon as that comes up, then we'll have something to announce, I think, at that point. But we're getting very close to the end of this, of this program. Um, the industrial park south, discussions continue. Um, I think we're gonna have a lot more land than we initially anticipated, uh, but like I said, discussions, I mean, we've been talking with some other groups on other sites throughout the county, so things are moving along in those areas. Um, and I think right now that's just about the end of it.
Michael, Michael, did you see the TIF meeting was February sixteenth at nine AM at the Learning Center?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you remember that for thirty seconds, Phil? Okay, then we have, uh, resolution zero-one-one-six-two-zero-two four. Uh, resolution entered to corporate agreement with the four-way housing authority to participate in the Hoover Homes program. This is a no cost to the county.
No cost to the county. All it does is allows the hub, as they're called, to come into the county and run this program. All that program does is it helps subsidize costs for, um, new and continuing homeowners to, um, purchase homes, closing costs, things like that. It's just additional fee for them. Makes homeownership easier.
Okay, I have your ten motion, through resolution zero-one-one-six-two-zero-two four.
That's third and final, right?
This is third and final reading.
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have anybody here commenting on this? Questions, concerns? Okay, all clear. Motion carries three. Okay, we have, uh, funding agreements. Okay, we have, uh, you guys had a chance to pull this over?
Yeah.
Okay, we have, uh, the Manifat Training Center for thirty thousand. We have Council on Aging, twenty thousand. Fulton County Animal Center, thirty-five thousand. Youth Outlet for six thousand. Fulton County Forge Council for ten thousand. Okay, and then can motion to approve this funding here.
And them are all, just like they always have been in the past, if I can remember.
Can these are rea-
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, all clear. Motion carries three. We can sign it out, if you think we can. Okay, we have, uh, get to take care of, very, personal policy. I just have it on here. Um, make sure that you guys can, you guys look it over. I sent that to you. Uh, any questions, Phil? Who else is on?
Brian.
Brian, is on the personal command. If you have questions, uh, we can, we can address those concerns and, uh, so if you guys had a chance to look at the travel request, you okay with those? I have an entertaining motion to approve those.
So move.
Second. All clear. Motion carries, sign it here, two. Um, we have the minutes. You guys look at the minutes. We have minutes from December twenty-ninth. Motion to, uh, we're in our, entertaining motion. Except the December twenty-ninth minutes.
Second.
All clear. Motion carries. We have January sixteenth minutes. Motion to approve.
Okay. Second.
All clear. Motion carries three. We have, uh, minutes of January nineteenth. That is there. Okay, motion to approve those. Motion paid.
Second.
All clear, all clear. Motion carries three. You guys had a chance to look over the financials, claims, transfers, appropriations? Are there any questions, concerns?
Yes, other than, uh, the one that was left off for Casey that we're gonna go ahead and approve, is that correct?
Correct. So, little addition to that is the, uh, EXO invoice for twenty-four thousand ninety-five dollars. I need a motion to approve that.
So move.
Second. All clear. Motion carries. Okay, we have payroll claim for one-twenty-six of two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Payroll deduction for, uh, eighteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. Okay, we have, uh, consolidated union, two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars.
For who?
You don't earn it. You don't earn it. Okay, we have utilities for nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. We have, uh, twenty, twenty-four funding agreements we just passed for a hundred and one thousand dollars total. We have, uh, January twenty, January credit card, uh, eleven-thousand-twenty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. We have, uh, NDOT, our match, John talked about earlier, eight-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Our shop experience on today, yeah?
Yeah.
Big project. Uh, we have this last client, February fifth, two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-fifty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. We have transfer. Soil and water, uh, from, uh, six-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars to contractual services from some areas. Okay, we have additional appropriation resolutions. Okay, we have, uh, the Health Department for three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Supplies and other charges. We have to, uh.
That's bad, huh?
We gotta go to each one of these. All right, there's something to lay to. This is a little bit of a, oh, like that.
Just muddle through it.
But they're for a different.
Just muddle through it, Brian.
Okay, here we go.
Yeah, you got it.
Just muddle through, just muddle through.
Muddle. Because it can't be like this, why don't we hurry? All right, we have the Health Department. Okay, I'll read the first, uh, resolution warning. They're all the same. So, whereas has been determined that it's not necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget. Now, therefore, section one be resolved by Fulton County, by the Council of Fulton, Indiana, that the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional subsidy money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purpose specified, substitute laws governing the state. Okay, first one, we have the Health Department for three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. They have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. All clear. Here is three. Okay. Second appropriation resolution, uh, same. This is local road street. Assuming that's highway?
Mm-hmm.
It's a little.
Yeah, highway.
Uh, for eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety dollars, and a motion to approve that resolution.
So move.
Second. Second. All fair. Motion carries three out. Okay. Resolution for public safety share. Same million for forty-four thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. So moved.
Second.
All favor. One hundred and days.
Yeah, it's alright.
Alright.
Not your fault.
Same appropriation on motor vehicle highway for twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. And a motion to approve.
All move.
Second. All fair. Here is three out. This appropriation resolution for the park non-reverting operating fund for nine hundred and two dollars. And a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
All fair. Motion carries three out. Same appropriation resolution for recorders, records, and perpetuation fund, one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. And a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All fair. Motion carries three out. Same resolution for reassessment, nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. And a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All fair. Here is three out.
I'm going to get right here and carry it.
Same resolution, uh, for lit, uh, rehab facilities, ten thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. And a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All fair. Here is three out. Same resolution for lit dedicated to PSAP, two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
What was that? Could you read, read that again?
Two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
For what?
It's the lit dedicated to PSAP, other services and charges.
Okay. I'd like to look at it when you're done at the end of the meeting.
Why don't you look at it now, we'll come back to it.
Yeah.
Banking area or cost list.
You come out of your forty-three and come back, do you have that covered in forty-three? The one, what she's.
Yeah.
Same resolution for, uh, conventional tourism, sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
Boston, you first?
Second. Maybe reading yours.
You might be reading mine? Good, go for it.
No, we've got some files on. What current?
Down here.
Yeah, whatever, we print them.
Okay. So we have the resolution for the visitor tourism, one thou- sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
So moved.
Second. All fair. Look at the paperwork, here is. Is it just the back? I think it's the back, it's the back page.
Yeah, so you got.
So we have the resolution for County General, three hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. It's for.
These are still appropriations, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We got a line that I.
So, so everything under date that. Okay.
So moved.
Second. All fair. Motion carries. Banking area. Okay, we have the resolution for the edit, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. Where are your plan? Banking years, these are all banking years. And a motion to approve. Second. Yeah, and a motion.
Second.
All fair. Motion carries. We have, uh, many corrections, two hundred and forty dollars. Prohibition.
It's cleaning up money from the year, please have point three. It's cleaning up.
Second.
It's cleaning up. It has nothing to do with you.
We have, uh.
Honest, I know what I speak.
Resolution for the sales disclosure. Can I share the assessor of one hundred and thirty-eight dollars?
Oh, second.
Scared for Jesus.
Hey, we have. Resolution for community capital development of fifty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Just with the auditor chair for IT.
Yeah, yeah.
Second. So moved. We have a resolution for the attribution of share assistance for seventeen dollars. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, we all.
We have. Resolution for shares, firearms, and destructions, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Second.
All fair. These mistakes can take the whole meeting effect. We have something on probation, hundred and ninety-five dollars. Provision. So moved. All fair.
Yeah.
Resolution for the. Prohibition, hundred and thirteen dollars.
So moved.
Second. All fair. Resolution for probation, two hundred and thirty dollars. And a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Second. And a motion to approve. Can't succeed with all this stuff. Yeah, well, this reason for, like, lots of communities. Hundred and thirty-six dollars. So moved.
I don't know.
All fair. Second. I have one for the community governments, it's for share of IT and courthouse. Don't you know, like, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars?
I do not, but it, it, it's just to clear up the books, so it's okay.
You gotta agree to whether to take it out.
So it's, it, it's okay.
From, from what I understand with, with the budgets last year, or for this year, they put it, they put it both in lit and, and in another place. I think that's what this is doing, is clean it up.
It's cleaning up everything from point three, that's what, that's what you're doing.
Yeah, but you gotta vote where to take the solid, you can't just pull, you can't just pull that county those fees up and throw it to E D.
Well, she gotta go through these guys.
Yeah.
All, all this stuff will eventually come to us.
Yeah. There are a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Second. All fair.
I, I can't contest it, it's something out of my hands, so I can't, I can't explain anything.
Okay, we have the, uh, lit dedicated to PSAP, two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. So moved. All fair. Whole business written?
No.
Dave, um, Polly?
No.
Whole business? New business written? Dave? Polly?
No.
Anybody new business, sorry? And a motion to reassess.
So moved.
Here is three out.